Okay, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council. It's Monday, February 10th, 2025. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Hershey?
Here.
Councilmember Colicetti?
Here.
Councilmember Bishop?
Here.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Here.
Councilmember Quizenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next item is approval of minutes from the previous meeting for December 16th, 2024. Is there a motion? Moved by Mary Alice, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jia. Any substantial corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Aye.
That motion passes. Additions to the agenda? We have none. We'll move to presentations and public input. If anyone wishes to address the Urbana City Council, please step to the microphone. And you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am Bill Colbrook, and I live in Ward 6. In the matter of about 24 hours, from this last Friday to Saturday, we lost three lives to senseless gun violence. These are just not statistics. The most tragic is the death of a child. We need to say his name. Darnell DJ Wicks. A precious seven-year-old. I am sad, and I am angry. I am sad for the victims and their families. These neighbors of ours had a lifetime to live, but were taken from this earth far too soon. The families will never be able to emotionally recover from losing a loved one. I am angry because perhaps these tragedies could have been prevented. The city paid for a comprehensive study of the police department by a reputable firm with expertise in the field. Actionable items were identified that could have prevented more tragedy and senseless deaths. But some members of City Council did not like the findings or the recommendations. Residents of the city wanted a professional progressive chief of police that could manage the department and implement the progressive programs that we all wanted, like the alternative police response model and community policing strategies. After a nationwide search, we found the perfect person. But his ideas have been rejected by some members of this council. This community wants to come together to have a safer Urbana. This council has had four years to take action. There should be no more debate. It is now time to act. This is a plea for action. Simply put, support the citizens of our city. Support the police department and the public safety initiatives. You are now embarking on budget discussions. Give the police department the funding for proper staffing, technology, equipment, and programs that could make our community safer. And just maybe, look them in the eye and sincerely thank them for the job that they do every single day. Remember, as we were going about our lives Friday and Saturday night, they were responding to members of our community that had suffered horrific injuries. This is in your hands. The community is watching. Say his name. Darnell DJ Wicks. Seven years old. He is much, much more than just a statistic. Thank you.
My name is Tammy Little, and I am the Transitional Housing Coordinator with First Followers. And I just wanted to piggyback after Danielle's report. And if she probably only knew that I was sending her probably 50% of those clients over to her. Our small drop-in center is open Tuesdays and Thursdays. And from the time that we open, sometimes people are already there, coming to us for assistance. 99.9% of them are homeless and seeking housing assistance. We recently had, in one of our clients, he was released from the Department of Corrections after serving 41 years. They put him in a van, and they brought him to the MTD Terminal, dropped him off, and said, "Good luck to you." And then he came to us. So I had to reach out to the community for assistance. Of course, we all know, everybody doesn't have the space. And this man, 70 years old, has severe medical issues. And he was one of the customers over there, or clients at stride, who they had him wait outside, and he had to be transported, suffering from hyperthermia. So this is a big problem. And we are seeing the increase, not only in those, the people that are coming into our center, but I also volunteered to do the phones. And I do the phones, and from the time, very early in the morning to late at night, people are calling for their loved ones that are about to be released, because those are the statistics out there. I spoke before, and over 300,000 inmates are being released in the state of Illinois every year. And we are feeling the trickle effects of that. And we need help. We need help. They have paid their debt to society. Many of them are coming out after 25, 27, 30, 40. This is the first one we had, 41 years. They have paid their debt to society, and now they're sick. They don't have any more families. Most of their families are dead or gone. So these people are coming into our communities, and we need to do better. Thank you.
You can hold the microphone for...
Hi, my name is Ava. I live one street away from the street that DJ was killed. Here's how I felt when DJ was killed. I felt scared, sad, and mad, because if we had more police, then he could have not have been killed. And if we had more resources that they could have gotten out to, then they might have, then this might have not have happened, and he would still be alive. Thank you for listening. I hope you give us the resources we need.
Hard to follow that, right? Even as a parent. My name is Giovanna Di Benedetto, and I currently live in the city of Urbana. I was barely in the door when I felt it. My hair being ripped, pulling my head back, and my body to the ground. I felt his kicks, the unmistakable steel-toed boots crushing me as he kicked me, and the punches to my face, yelling profanities. I begged him for my life. Didn't listen. He kicked more. Finally, I don't know why, he stopped. I promised him my life, my child's life, and my unborn granddaughter's life. Lily, who's sitting here tonight? That night, it was the beginning of the end for our family. Thanks to a safety plan, we got out alive, and we fled the state of Washington, ending up here in Illinois. We spent the next two years in hiding, and through resources that were available in Urbana, we carved a new path forward. So many others are not so lucky. DJ was not so lucky. His last moments were not peaceful. He was scared and terrified and praying that someone would come to his rescue. But no one could be there. I know this, because I've lived that part of my life. I have sat here and heard the plans that Chief Bone has recommended so that we can prevent these tragedies. I have watched City Council members, Chris Evans, Grace Wolkerston, and others, block the recommendations, and I've heard some people talk about living in fear of the police. So a fully-equipped police department is not the answer. To you, I say, you don't know what fear is. You don't know what it's like to be at the receiving end of someone's anger, begging for your life, or the life of your families. Our system this time did not fail, DJ. You did, by not giving our city the resources that are so desperately needed. So I stand here today, not just as a survivor, but a warrior and a fighter. And my family, despite sitting down over there again, we promise you that until you give the residents of Urbana the resources that they need, and that you were elected to give them, to give us, we are going to be here. We will support the police department, we will support the chief, whatever it takes. Because we, we are going to be the voice of DJ. We are going to be the voice of the adults that lost their lives that didn't have to. I don't want to have to stand up here again like this. Sadly, I know I will. I just beg of you for our kids, and for the people that you know that you don't even know are suffering in silence. I'm going to be blunt here, get off your butts and do your job, so we don't have to bury another kid. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. James Corbin, also known as Acronymist Tiger. Urbana resident, long-term Urbana resident, and here as a representative of H3, as well as First Followers. And first, I'd like to say that, you know, it is with heavy heart that these violent episodes that we have just seen in our community are affecting us. I do feel affected, and now is not the time to point fingers and blame, but the time to start healing and talk about how we're going to heal this. Because, you know, like you, my niece just had DJ at his house, at her house, chasing her cat. You know, so this touched our family deeply, as well as my sister. You know, she really loved the little guy, and he was just over there eating, you know, lunch and dinner with them. So, you know, we know this family. I knew the 18-year-old family. You know, I'm aware of his family. So we do understand, this cut deep, you know, about us being in the street. We understand that. Now, and I'm going to say this, that we're not against the police or anything like that, but we are looking for violence prevention measures. You know, something that could get out there that could help counter these measures before they're gone. Because what some of this, so what we're seeing is from old, and some of this is new. So we do need more holistic, a wraparound approach. And, you know, I believe that, you were talking about that, right, Chief? That whole holistic approach, working with organizations as well as other members to get out and stop this before it escalates. And that's a lot what we're seeing now. We're seeing, you know, we're seeing this again. These things resurface. And like this young, little seven-year-old guy, you know, who was a treasure. And again, the other gentleman, the elderly, well, he's my age. So these things are cutting deep in our community. We are not running and hiding. We always been saying the same thing. We looking for this entire wraparound approach. However that looks, with violence intervention, or interrupters on the ground, working with the police, that is fine. But we're going to need to see more of that. We all know this too. As times get harder, and we're seeing all these cuts going on, violence increasing areas. So the summer is coming. There will be probably retaliation behind this, I'm pretty sure of that, you know? So can the police be everywhere? No, they can't. So can we be everywhere? No, we can't. But at the same time, we do need to be out there working as a unit together, not pointing fingers at each other right now. This is not the time. And my prayers go out to the family of DJ, as well as the other young man, the 18-year-old who got killed. And, man, I'm going to just keep our, in our community. Our prayers need to go out to our community. Because like I said, we're on the ground. We see what's, we see what's happening. We try to do as much as we can, but at the same time, we also trying to run programs that will pull these young men into and off the street where they can, you know, give an alternative. But I'm going to just leave it there, and that's all I want to say, man. Just keep everybody in their prayers and pray for us to heal. And that's it. That's all I want to say.
I'm sorry, y'all.
You don't have to stand if you don't want to.
This was just unexpected anyway, but my name is Justin Morris. I am a member of the community, whether it be Urbana or Champaign, but I am from here, born and raised. I want to say that I am an individual that has been incarcerated several times because of my actions and because of the decisions that I made. But at this present moment, and forevermore, I plan on elevating myself as well as my community. So what I really came to say today is, there's a lot of things going on in Urbana. Right now, I'm living on Silver and Water, where everything is taking place, as everyone knows. But we're looking at an area that is, it's pretty much heavily populated with a lot of children. And there is absolutely nothing for them to do over there. They running around, they don't have a field, they don't have anything to play on, they don't have a basketball court, they have nothing. But we expect them to do the right thing. We expect them to live as what's called normal children. But how can they do that if they don't even know how to be normal children? They're not teaching that in the schools. They're not giving, I have a son that is 16 right now. He's going to Centennial. And from the time he was in the seventh grade, they've been pushing him along. And I hate to say that, because when I was coming up, we were forced to do our work. We were forced to do our homework, do the tests, get everything done, and get a good grade. Kids are getting Fs now and still graduating. Ds. How is that? But I'm not standing here as an innocent person, like I said. I stand here as a product of what we've created. I hate to say that I'm a part of it, but I have passed that down to these present generations. And the only way, I'm not going to say the only way, but one of the bigger ways for us to kind of fix it is to allow the people that these kids see on a regular basis, that are doing the right thing, or that was once in that life, and that now have a new mindset. Let those be the people that carry them to a different mindset, or to a better mindset, where they are able to become productive members of society. Hopefully. But how would we know if we don't give them a chance? Tony Odom has a program for mentoring over in Champaign. Where's the one for Urbana? Urbana has, like we say, a lot of kids. But how many of these parents over here in Urbana are going to carry their kids all the way to Champaign so that they can go to a mentoring program? Well, there needs to be something in Urbana, and it needs to be more than one, because we have a lot of children that need help. I am one that has wrote up proposals for mentor programs, as well as Mr. Mika here, and hopefully, everything is going to be in order. And hopefully, we get the support that we need once it comes time. But like I said, there's a lot going on on Silver and Water. There's no lights over there, on the streets. Up and down these streets that all the gunfire and all the dangerous activity is going on, they have nothing but room and opportunity to do it. They'll never be seen. You'll be having unsolved cases for the rest of your life. Because ain't nobody going to tell too much of nothing. Well, I don't know. Nowadays, it's a little different. But I know at one point, people didn't tell nothing. So maybe we should assume that it's like that, and prevent it from happening before somebody has to tell. There's a lot going on. Like I say, I'm still going to keep saying it. I want to put that, it's a lot going on. But it's not going to stop if we don't put any kind of effort into it. That's what I got for y'all.
Hello, my name is Tamika Davis. And I'm part of First Followers. I help a lot of clients over from the Walter Silver, Silver area. And I went to go pick him up tonight, and I would, I just really went to make sure I was solid on, before I got to talking. Like he said, there's no streetlights. It's dark, and then there's a light, then it's dark. The violence that goes on over there is unmeasurable. It's sickening. Nobody's doing anything. When I drop clients off, I see a whole lot of kids. I do mean more than 20. And they just running around playing. There's not a park. There's not a basketball hoop. There's not a merry-go-round. There's no swings. There's no grass. I see parking lots. I see abandoned buildings. I see people just running to and fro. But I don't see the main theme for these children to be children. Secondly, there are so many police calls for Dollar Tree. I have a cousin that works there, and she complains all the time about different things that goes on in Dollar Tree, and the police department tells her all the time that they are coming or borrow them from the building. And one day she left, and four boys walked up to her and punched her in the back of her head. Now, that could have been ugly. I know the police can't be everywhere. I know this. I know this wholeheartedly, I know this. But I know it's something that can be done. See, we know the problems out here in our community. And then sometimes we sit back and we just wait till something happens. See, we got to stop doing that. We got to be solution-based. We know the problem. And if the problem is at the table, we got to find a solution. What is the solution to change our community, to change the violence that goes on in this community? This is in Champaign and Urbana, and it's sad. We sit and we wait till something happens. And I say that because here it is, nothing happens, nobody says anything, but soon as something happens, everybody running into the limelight. No, no. We got to find measurable moments, measurable times. We got to do something before that happens. And what is the solution? I don't have it by myself. First Followers don't have it by ourselves. But we got boots on the ground out here. We are sweating bullets. We are doing what we're supposed to do out here in these streets, but we are alone out here. Where is our people? Stand with us. Bring the people. This is what we need. These are our communities. This is my community. And I'm going to fight and stand for my community. I'm going to stand for my people. But I'm sad, because there's no solutions. There's no solutions. Everybody come to the table. Nothing happens until something happens. Then that's when everybody trying to say, oh, no, it's too late. Seven-year-old is gone. Now, I did read the report where they took off guns and drugs and... But what about them unsolved crimes? The mothers that still weep about the deaths of their children? What about those? Are we digging? Are we just layering it? Are we just throwing a sheet or a blanket over it? Find that. Fattening a frog for the snake. They out there. Somebody going to talk. Somebody got to say something. This community got to stop being quiet. If my friend watched me be killed, and they know who did it, tell. It ain't, it ain't you that I need you to take care of. Let them rot in prison, or whatever they got to do. But we got to be solution-based. Thank you.
I just want to piggyback on something you said real quick, I'm sorry.
Sir, sir, one...
Oh, you can't do that. You only get one time.
No repeats.
I don't feel like getting up, but, because of my cane. But I'm Angelo Neil, I'm a resident of Urbana with First Followers. And I lost my son to gun violence here. So I know, as a mother, that pain don't stop. It don't matter how long it's happened. It hurts daily, and it's getting younger and younger and younger. And I'm with a group called Cry For You. It's mothers who lost their kids in this community. And the group is getting bigger, bigger, and bigger. It's more mothers coming in there weekly, because we lost our kids in this very community that we love. And we out there fighting, trying to see what the solutions are. But we need our city officials. We, right now, the way this country going, we all need to come together, baby. I mean, everybody. Okay? When I say everybody, no matter what your culture is, no matter what you look like, is, we all in this together. Is united, we stand, or divided, we fall. And you see the division, we falling, slowly but for surely, and we there. So as a mother who lost my child here, and after week, each week, for other mothers, please stand with us and see what solutions we could come up with. Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Could you put the mic back up?
Yeah.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the council? Thank you. Chris?
I, I have public input. Can we read? Uh, this is a, a letter from Dr. Stephanie Cockrell, the Executive Director of the Well Experience. Dear Chief Boone, Members of the Urbana Police Department and the Urbana City Council, our hearts are heavy with grief over the devastating loss our community has suffered. These tragedies cut deep into the fabric of our city, leaving families shattered and our community in mourning. We share in this sorrow and we are committed to working toward real solutions that address violence and create lasting safety for our people. However, we are deeply disappointed and disturbed by the response issued by Chief Boone in the wake of this tragedy. Instead of standing in solidarity with a grieving community, offering support and acknowledging the complex and systemic issues that contribute to cycles of violence, his statement used this painful moment as an opportunity to reinforce a policing agenda that has long fallen short in serving and protecting black communities. Chief Boone, your message claims that those who question your initiatives must now, quote, "confront the painful reality we face" as if we have never, as if we ever denied the presence of violence in our communities. This assumption is both harmful and dismissive. We have always been aware of the reality of violence because we live with its consequences every day. What we have called for time and time again is not a dismissal of the problem, but a demand for holistic solutions that address the root causes of crime and violence. We have urged investment in healing, mental health services, economic empowerment, housing security and support systems that restore families rather than overpolicing and criminalizing those already suffering under systemic oppression. We must be clear, having more police would not have prevented this tragedy. More officers on the street would not have changed what happened. What would? Real investments in mental health, family support, conflict resolution programs and economic opportunities that keep people from reaching points of crisis in the first place. It is time to have a hard, honest conversation about what actually works and what does not. These problems are not new and they are not isolated incidents. They are symptoms of a much larger crisis, one that this city and many others have ignored for far too long. Instead of truly addressing those deep-rooted issues, we continue to slap Band-Aids on wounds that are far too big to be covered up. And now, in a moment when our community is in pain, when families are in mourning, you have chosen to exploit our tragedy for your own benefit. This proves exactly what we have seen and assumed all along, a lack of genuine care and concern for the people who are hurting the most. This could have been a moment for leadership, for genuine connection and for healing. It would have been an opportunity for Chief Boone to visit the families who experienced loss, attend the candlelight vigil and show up, not as a policymaker pushing an agenda, but as a human being, standing in solidarity with those grieving. This was a time to build relationships and trust. Instead, this painful moment is being used to advance policies that do not serve our people. I cannot fully express how much it hurt to see this. In the minds of many black families, police are often just as violent and harmful to us as the streets. And this act of exploitation only reinforces that reality. Yes, domestic violence must be addressed. Yes, we must act. And I'll put the rest of this letter on the record. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to address the council? Okay, we'll move on to council input and communication. Jaya.
Thank you. Um, there's, you know, so much pain. It's hard to, to know where to even start tonight. Um, but I do want to share just a, a few resources for our community as, as we're processing this grief. Obviously, um, the folks at First Followers, the Well Experience, the Utrum and Resilience, we do have incredible resources for folks. But I also, you know, specifically want to make sure that people are aware of some 24/7 services related to domestic violence. Um, so the first being the National Domestic Violence Hotline, which is available at any time at 1-800-799-SAFE or 7233. Um, often it takes many times for someone to leave an abusive relationship on average, about seven times. So making sure that people have access to support and, um, resources for safety planning as they, they navigate that situation is, is vital. Um, locally Courage Connection is the 24/7 service provider. Their hotline is 217-384-4390 or 877-384-4390. Um, we've had lots of thoughts, um, in terms of, of how to, to react to what's happened, but I think it's important just to give space for our community to grieve. We can absolutely, need to have conversations about what safety and healing looks like in our community. But I think at this time, recognizing that we lost three souls in our community this weekend and have lost other community members, not only to violence, but also to the elements, um, I think is, is the most important thing is to hold, hold our community members in our heart tonight.
Any other comments from council? Okay, thank you all. We'll move on to Committee of the Whole.
On behalf of Committee of the Whole, I present the consent agenda including, um, sorry, I move it for approval, right? Moving for approval, the consent agenda including ordinance number 2025-02-006 and ordinance amending Schedule A of Section 2362 of the local, Urbana Local Traffic Code, increasing state speed limits in certain zones, correcting errors and omissions in Schedule A of various streets. Also, Resolution Number 2025-02-013R, Resolution approving a license agreement with New Lincoln Square LLC, six total signs adjacent to Lincoln Square Mall.
There's second.
Second.
Moved by Grace, seconded by Jaya. Annie, uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Hersi?
Yes.
Councilmember Colasetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Hopefully he comes back. That motion passes.
Regular agenda?
Yes.
Sorry, next on the, excuse me a minute. James, was that a yes?
It was.
Okay, thank you.
I had trouble with the mute button, sorry.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Grace.
Next on the regular agenda, I move for approval, ordinance number 2025-02-004 and ordinance approving a major variance, buoy porch stair front yard at 501, 501 West Washington Street, case number ZBA 2024-MAJ-03.
Second. Moved by Grace, seconded by Shandra. Did want to, um, make sure everyone saw the communication today from, uh, City Attorney Rushley. The operative sentence here is that he concurs with the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Staff and believe it's the soundest approach from a legal standpoint. And this is in response to the question from council last week. But, um...
Mayor, if I could make just one point of clarification about the email. Uh, I mischaracterized the zoning board's action as a denial. In fact, it was an approval, uh, that we would essentially refer to as incomplete without a finding as to the operative criterion, um, in the case.
Mary Alice?
Um, so I was going back in and reading the Zoning Board of Appeals minutes and so forth. And there is mention about why it, the, the applicant didn't find it appropriate to put the stairs to the side. I can't remember whether both sides, um, like, so right now the stairs would have to be facing either what east or west, I guess, would be. So one thing is, is that they talked about the shared driveway, right? So it, it doesn't seem like it would be a good plan to put the stairs that go off of the shared driveway. Is there another configuration that wouldn't need a zoning approval?
I don't know if I want to speak for the architect, who's the applicant. Um, one could go off the west side of the porch and then head north so that the stairs would not be encroaching into the yard. But again, that is kind of a overly complicated design rather than coming just straight south. Sorry, straight north. Um, and you were correct in, in the beginning part where, uh, their assertion was coming to the west towards the shared driveway, um, may, you know, affect the shared nature of the driveway. Their application also mentioned, uh, you know, they would want to light the stairs and that light might shine over into the neighbor's property.
The, the reason I bring it up is I, I believe one of the reasons that the, um, planning department recommended to deny it was because there was no special circumstances that, that they weren't in, um, that they didn't create, right? And so I guess my question is, um, not all driveways in Urbana are shared. There are special circumstances with shared driveways, right? Is that, um, is that the basis for, is that a justifiable basis for approval?
As a planning professional, I would say that's a very, uh, very light special circumstance and not something that I would grant a major variance for. You know, I think you brought up the example of the, the garage on the corner lot over on Illinois. You know, that is like a perfect storm of things that were created prior to that owner, you know, um, applying for a variance. In this case, um, you know, although it's, it's a better design to come straight south, um, a shared driveway, you know, one could claim that that was a, a practical difficulty or a special circumstance. I, I wouldn't as a planning professional, but, uh, city council could.
Okay, thank you. Grace?
Um, I appreciate the follow-up information and looking at the, at a six kind of criteria, right? And sorry if I'm missing this in the email. I thought previously it was, there's not a requirement to meet all six or is there a set? I thought it was like at least four out of six. Like, is there a number there on meeting how many out of those six criteria?
So that I can give you a pretty good answer to. Former City Attorney Kurt Borman had, you know, written staff some guidance saying that there is no minimum number of criteria to meet a variance request. Um, not a preponderance, not a majority. However, staff have always gone with and been guided by the fact that the baseline is establishing that there is a special circumstance or practical difficulty. So that is kind of like the baseline criteria and then there are five other criteria.
Okay, and so your practice is to have that as the baseline? You're saying there is not a legal standard for having to meet all six of those?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mary Alice?
Just for clarity, so there's six criterion and there's no magic number, is what I'm hearing you say. Um, and so that means that any of those items could potentially, even though staff treats the first one as the priority, the ordinance does not necessarily say that the first one is the priority. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Your motion? Oh, you had a question?
Sorry, I had discussion. I'm torn on this one. I'm curious to hear from others. I think that, you know, in the practical sense, this porch, as we have in these four criteria, in a sense, doesn't hurt anyone, doesn't cause a nuisance, doesn't cause a safety risk, um, fits better with the neighborhood aesthetics and things that make sense, like someone walking to a front door to the front. Um, so I think this all makes sense in a practical sense. And yeah, I'm really torn because I also hear on the other side the importance of having fairness and consistency and redoing how we set the standards as a larger holistic picture. And I definitely agree with that. So yeah, I'm, yeah, interested to hear from others. I feel like this is a hard one. It would be hard to vote no for something that makes so much sense, to stand with consistency, but I do understand that, so.
Jaya?
Yeah, um, I agree, it makes sense. But I do stand with the, uh, we can't just willy-nilly apply the rules. Um, so I think while I, I, I get it, why someone's asking for this. Um, you know, the, the city attorney, the, the city staff have looked at, what does our ordinance say right now? And if we're not going to use our ordinances, you know, what, what other rules that the city of Urbana has? Or we're just going to say, well, if you blew a stop sign and you didn't hurt anybody, it's okay? Like, it doesn't make sense to me. And, and is that something that depending on whether we like that person or their, their reason for blowing a stop sign, um, we, we're going to apply the rules differently? I, I think that's a, a really dangerous precedent. Like I said, I, I get why they want to do this. I, you know, I think we have a good solution in that we can change the ordinance. But I have a, I find it highly problematic that we would just change the way we implement the rules because of a personal preference. And I think that that is not an appropriate, um, standard for this, for this body to set. So, um, as much as I like the idea, um, I will be voting against this and I look forward to seeing, uh, a proposed change to the ordinance. And I, I appreciate, you know, the staff's taking time on this. I appreciate, um, everyone's input on this, but I, I really think that it's, it's not appropriate for us to apply rules differently depending on aesthetic appeal or how big a deal we think it is.
Any other comments? Mary Alice?
Actually have a question for the lawyer. So based on, um, what was just said by staff in terms of the number of items that have to be, that, the criteria that have to be met. I believe your email this morning said something about it doesn't meet two of the criteria. Can you clarify that for me?
Yeah, that was just simply based upon the, my review of the variance criteria and my understanding of the, the case here. Um, and I have to go back to my email quickly to take a look at which ones. But, um, I think what the ones I highlighted were A and F, so.
Correct.
Uh, A being, um, the special conditions and circumstances relating to the land or structure to be used, um, uh, which is not generally applicable to other lands and structures in the same district. That one is fairly straightforward, um, in this case as the, the, the standard, the, the require, that the variance request is based upon is applicable across the zoning district. And then, uh, F would be... And then F would be, the variance is the result of practical difficulties or particular hardship in the way of carrying out the strict letter, the strict letter of the zoning ordinance. And my understanding in this case is that there would be a delay in, potentially in the alternative solution. But as I understand it, would not result in a hardship as we have understood it historically. The zoning professional also can weigh in if he has a different take on this, but that's, that was my read on this. I think I would place more emphasis on A than F in a definitive sense, but I think both, both are, are criteria that I would point to as being deficient here.
All right. So if I'm hearing you correctly, you feel that this proposal does not meet A or F, but that doesn't necessarily mean it doesn't meet B, C, D, or E. Is that correct? Because you looked at A and F.
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
Okay, okay, thank you. I appreciate that. So, so here's my thought, and I completely understand Jay's point here. You know, I'm going to take us back for a moment to the duplex conversation in which we, it was the reverse of this, right? It was changing the zoning rules. And the big thing that came out of that was, well, it makes sense in some cases and it doesn't make sense in other cases. And so the solution there was to have it go to the zoning board of appeals if they wanted to be able to build a duplex on a smaller lot that is in the ordinance. And then there was a lot of conversation. That's how I intend for this stuff to come. So in my opinion, this one actually came correctly, right? So it, because that's how I had hoped that the duplex would work, is it would go to the zoning board of appeals, and then they would talk about their specific location, their specific case, and why it makes sense. And so in one case, I kind of feel like this is doing what I was hoping the other one would do. I think it's clear from staff and from legal that A and F are not met. We are not bound by the ordinance to have A and F met. We have to use the criteria in there, but it never says how many of the criteria. So I'm going to be in favor of this one.
Can I ask a question about?
Go ahead, James.
My question is, if we vote on this and the majority votes no, is that sufficient? Or do we actually need a motion and action to reject this?
Are you asking if you need to state the criteria for voting no? The reasons?
No, no, well, that's kind of the implication, right? Because right now we have a motion to approve it in a second, and if we vote on that, that fails. But because we are acting on a variance request, do we then need to turn around and have a motion to fail it and state the criteria and have a, have an affirmative rejection, if that, if I can call it that? Is it just the fact that the motion that we have currently failed, is that sufficient in the eyes of the zoning procedures for us to reject this? Or do we have to take a more positive, as opposed to passive action, to reject it?
Matt, did you want to weigh in on this?
As I understand that the ordinance, as it's presented, it requires, for an affirmative vote to approve the ordinance, it requires the completion of the blank, which is a statement of the special circumstances or practical difficulty associated with the parcel, which didn't, was not subject to a finding at the ZBA level and not identified by staff. So it gives council the opportunity to identify what that special circumstance or practical difficulty is that would justify approval here. And as I understand it, it would be an either affirmative or vote on the ordinance or a denial of it. It's a, an up or down.
And to further clarify, you can also approve it without adding that item. And correct, James, you are correct, James. The current motion on the floor does not contain language to fill in that blank, and you can pass it that way, but it would not legally be sufficient for the zoning portion. But it would pass the item, but it wouldn't be enforceable or effective, as I understand it. But you can also vote no on the motion to approve it without any further action, and that would be sufficient. Because the action of this body is to either vote affirmative or negative on the motion on the floor.
The reason why I asked this is because back when we were talking about the storage facility on High Cross Road, I believe that there was a rejection of that at the zoning board of appeals, but it was revisited because the rejection did not include a reason why. And so that's why I'm concerned that we're stuck either way unless we actually define that.
So I would assert that the council has different operating procedures than the zoning board of appeals, planned commission, all of those. And the reason that you even have to include a blank in this instance exclusively for the approval is because the subsidiary body failed to do so. But I do not believe the burden of saying why you're denying it falls on the city council. The council has the authority to vote yea or nay.
Matt?
I would just simply add that by passing an ordinance, essentially council's adopting legislation. And so what it would be doing is adopting legislation as to this particular case in front of it that, for lack of a better description, in this one instance amends the criteria of the zoning code. It varies from what the code requires by not stating that particular condition.
Grace.
Thank you. And just a clarification on that. So you're saying that not necessarily the council procedures, but the zoning ordinance requires a statement of a special circumstance, even though it's not required to be met? Is that right? You don't have to have a special circumstance, right? You said that's the practice is the baseline, but that's not really required, but it's required to state a special circumstance?
That is what we've been directed to do, not by our city legal representative, but by other staff. If the city attorney does not feel that it is necessary, or if they do feel that it's necessary to state that baseline, city staff are happy to defer to those subject matter experts.
Thank you. Yeah, and I'm, I think this highlights, you know, potentially some things to consider in the big picture thing, you know? If we do the practice of having that as a baseline standard, then that would make sense to write it in there. If we have to state a special circumstance, that'd be good to have it in there because this has come up before for reasons of saying no, that we also have to state the reasons why. And so I'm just, yeah, it's a little confusing when you don't have to have a special circumstance, but you have to state the special circumstance.
So the ordinance, the item on the agenda, and remind me who seconded that, please.
Yeah, Councilmember Wilkin motioned, and it was seconded by Councilmember Bishop, and there, it was simply just a motion to approve.
Okay, so it's a motion approving major variance. Sharice, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I guess what I'm, what I'm, I'm a bit confused about what I, what I, that I would probably approve this, but I do want to say why. And mostly, I keep thinking about the fact that the, that the house was built before there was an ordinance to have a 25-foot yard requirement. There was no zoning regarding that. And if I were to, to suggest anything regarding whether or not, you know, how we deal with that, I would have to say, I think it would, it would depend more on how the, the structure is. If the structure predates the zoning ordinance, there's no way that that home could be moved back to make that happen. I would think that, and it doesn't take away from, from the character of the neighborhood, it, the, it doesn't cause a nuisance. All of these, the two highlighted things in the letter really just deal with the 25-foot requirement, more or less, and that there is no special use and, or, I'm sorry, practical difficulty or particular hardship. And I would think that homes that, that just kind of got grandfathered in should have the same ability to update their structure as needed. And if those particular circumstances exist, we need to take into consideration, I believe, the, the age of the, of the structure and does it predate the zoning, the zoning board? The other thing I would say is that may, that may be something that the zoning board wants to actually add to the ordinance is, is considering the age of certain structures and whether they fall in under the special circumstance of actually predating the zoning If, I don't, I don't necessarily think that it, it would cause any other kind of issue except that it just doesn't meet that main criteria. And there are evolutions to all kinds of neighborhoods. In my neighborhood, when that, our property line ended at the curb, I don't know if our house makes that variance right now because sidewalks were added. I don't know where that ends now. There's, you know, there's evolution. When I grew up in my neighborhood, there weren't any sidewalks and there weren't any streetlights. So neighborhoods change, and those kinds of measurements change with them. So I don't, I don't see that there is an issue because of the ordinance. We're not sticking strictly to that particular ordinance because of the simple fact that the building of that house came before there were zoning ordinances, or this particular zoning ordinance at least. So am I correct in thinking that maybe, because the developer actually said that they weren't going to start doing anything until the spring, is there a way that we can postpone anything until they changed something, they changed the wording, or they add another section or whatever to the zoning ordinance regarding that? Can we do it that way? If, I mean, if some people feel, you know, weird about just approving some things and not approving other things, maybe the wording needs to be there in some kind of way that, so that they will feel comfortable in voting to approve a porch?
Well, you've got an item, you've got an item on the agenda in front of you.
Mm-hmm. So I'm just asking, is there, is there?
Put your hand up, Matt. Okay, Matt, do you want to weigh in there?
I wanted to speak to something that we talked about earlier. It wasn't necessarily directly in response to what Sharice was asking, but I'd point a clarification on the ordinance itself.
Sharice, can Matt clarify the ordinance first before we address your question?
Sure.
Okay.
Though, I can't speak to what the previous assistant city attorney, what guidance he would have given in terms of the criteria. I haven't seen a memo, and I'm reticent to agree or disagree with whatever his analysis was. But what I would say is, he's correct in that, when weighing these six criteria, there's not a requirement that all six of them exist in order for it to be approved. It's not legally constructed in that way. However, if you, if you look at the ordinance, it does say that the city council must make specific findings of fact that are specific to the property or the variance in question by describing the special circumstances or special difficulties that exist in carrying out the strict application of the ordinance. And so that paragraph places emphasis on item A, making it what I would describe as a threshold determination. Because the language is must language, that the council must make these findings specifically as to the property, the specific circumstances of the property. And that was the question that was posed to me last week and that, you know, I was answering in the email, because that is the operative question here. It is true that all six items don't have to be present, but I do think item A needs to be present in order to proceed. I think that's, that's pretty clear from the way the ordinance is constructed.
So the way the motion is constructed, a yes vote, if that prevails, must be accompanied by an explanation or findings of fact. And if it's a no vote and it's defeated, no explanation is required. Correct?
That's correct.
I'm just, for my own purposes. Marcus.
And I was reading a different section of the zoning ordinance, which we don't normally share with folks. It's a little later on in the procedural part. Subsection E3 says, "If the council decides to grant the major variance requested, it shall do so by adopting an ordinance by a majority vote of older persons then holding office that recites the findings of fact, which support their decision and sets forth any conditions the council deems necessary or desirable." Which sounds similar to what Matt said, but it's another section that talks about it that specifically states, recites the findings of fact. It doesn't say which it meets or has to meet, it just simply says you have to share the findings of fact as it relates to those six criteria. If you found that there were special circumstance or practical difficulty, then you state what that is. Unless the zoning board of appeals or staff provided a finding of fact for that particular criteria, and then you could say, we agree with the staff's findings of fact. In this case, staff didn't find one, and ZBA didn't find one, so that leaves city council with the task of filling in that blank that's on the ordinance.
Okay, clarification. If, if this is approved, can that language be included in the current ordinance? Or does it have to be, you use the term adopt another ordinance?
I think the way this was structured with the blank was designed to add, simply add it into this ordinance, and then we can fix this typo where it says, or practical difficult.
Okay. Sandra.
Yes, I would like to call for the question, please.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor, just, it's been a while since it was made, for ordinance number 2025-02-004, which is an ordinance approving a major variance for the Bowie porch stair front yard at 501 West Washington Street. Will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Hersi?
Yes.
Councilmember Colasetti?
No.
Councilmember Bishop?
No.
Councilmember Wilkin?
No.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
No.
We have four no votes, three yes votes. That motion is denied, defeated. All right, we'll move on to res, oh, go ahead, Grace.
Sorry, next we'll move for approval, resolution number 2025-02.
Sorry, Grace, can I interrupt for a second? Could I, sorry, related to the last item, can I say something quickly, just to reinforce, at least for myself, that still, yes, to please the staff work on the ordinance so that this will be allowable? Be correct.
We look forward to bringing you a zoning text amendment that will address this. Thank you for your time and consideration and your thoughtful comments. and your thoughtful comments.
For approval, resolution number 2025-02-014R, resolution approving the Equity and Quality of Life, EQL program for fiscal year 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Grace, seconded by Jayla. Discussion, and we have John Zeeman here tonight if you have questions. Grace?
I just want to say thank you for all who helped to make it possible for this to continue. I think this is a really important program. Appreciate BPAC and staff and others who participated in the community needs survey. Did want to just express, from what I recall of the creation of this, was to address some of the inequity in our community that largely can surround infrastructure and that that can take various forms. So I think that some of the decisions for sidewalks and street lighting make sense this round. And also just wanted to be sure that it wasn't limited exclusively to pedestrian infrastructure. I think that there are things that were brought up even tonight about carts, parks, and sports courts and some kinds of partnerships potentially. Just wanted to say a piece on, appreciate this going, and I think it's important to consider inequity and quality of life in its various forms. And I hope that we continue to keep this program going. Thank you.
Mary Alice?
So, so based on some of the comment, commentary that we heard today during public input, just, this does include streetlights in some of the areas that were talked about today. It also includes pedestrian facilities, such as new sidewalks on both sides, in this exact area. So I just wanted to draw the attention so that people understood that at least in this equal program, we are going to be focusing a lot of attention on that area that people were talking about today.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Hersi?
Yes.
Councilmember Colasetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Grace. We have no reports from special committees, reports of officers.
Since John is here, I was hoping that maybe you could, because I don't want to get it wrong, but is it, is it not true that in the spring there will be streetlights installed to accompany the new sidewalks along Silver? Or is that in the second round of equal?
Not all of the sidewalk locations receive streetlights. So I have to, I'd have to go back and check which parts are getting the streetlights. I'm sorry, I don't remember off the top of my head.
Okay. What, what I, what I was referring to is there was a series of sidewalk installations, and there was one on Silver Street. And most of them, but as John said, not all of them are going to get streetlights. So I would like to confirm that, and we can circulate that. But they'll be getting streetlights either this round, this spring, or in the next round, as Mary Alice pointed out.
Thank you. Um, new business. We have resolution 2025-02-015R, which is a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant. We have deputy chief Boone, or deputy chief Smizer and chief Boone.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to highlight a grant that's familiar to me back east, is somewhat unfamiliar to me here. Same grant, we just used it for different purposes. And since deputy chief Smizer has been here much longer than me, he has the historical context and for what they have historically used the grant for. So.
You're putting me on the spot, boss. We have received this grant for a number of years, many, many years. It comes in annually. The city of Champaign is actually the, the one who gets the grant from the federal government. We are a sub-grantee. So our portion of the overall grant this year would be just over $16,000, $16,030. We typically try to use the grant money to fund something within the department of deficiency that we have identified that is not otherwise noted in our budget or laid out in our budget. And that's what we're attempting to do again this year with this money. $16,030 total. And we're going to be using it, if you agree to accept it, for what essentially comes down to helmets and shields. They are things that we have, like I said, we have identified as a need for the department. It's one of those things that we hope to not to have to use, but it's best to have and not need as opposed to need and not have. So right now, we don't have enough helmets for the entirety of the department. We have a number of ballistic helmets that are available, readily available and accessible to the officers that are on the streets should they need them. The helmets that we would be looking to purchase are not ballistic rated helmets. They're helmets that could stop things like rocks and bottles. So it's a, it's a piece of a safety, it's a piece of safety equipment for our staff. It's really how we look at it.
These are strictly defensive equipment, not offensive, defensive. So it's to protect the officers. As you've seen during January 6, the officers that were highlighted in those videos had a much level, a higher level ballistic helmet and shield than we are purchasing. And I don't have to speak much more to that. You've seen the outcome of that. Again, this is strictly defensive, not offensive.
Mary Alice?
I just have a procedural question. So this is a two-part, right? So we first have to accept the grant, and then there'll be a budget amendment in which we'll have to put the grant money into. So I just wanted to let everybody know that we have to do this twice. So I, I hope if it does pass, that those who do pass it also support the budget amendment.
Thank you for that clarification. Grace?
Thanks for the information on what this would be used for. I guess, two questions is, one, do we already have, you said we have the ballistic shields and face masks, but we don't have ones of this specific form already?
Yes, we have, not enough for the entire department. The ballistic helmets are rated to stop pistol rounds or some smaller caliber firearms. And we have some ballistic shields that will do the same, that we would use in certain situations. If we had to, say, for example, go into a residence or a structure where we thought somebody might be in there with a gun, we could use it, again, as a defensive tool. Those are ballistic rated. What we're looking at here are things that are not ballistic rated. They're much lighter, they won't stop a bullet, but they'll stop a rock. So plastic shields and helmets, polymer and plastic, that would essentially, the point being if somebody threw a brick or a rock or a bottle, it would keep our officers from getting injured.
And the ballistic shields won't stop those other things as well?
The ballistic shields would. We don't have very many of them. They're very expensive, they're very heavy. They're much heavier than the shields we would be looking to replace, and they're, they're difficult to carry.
And then my other question was, I think you explained that example of when you would use the ballistic ones. I was wondering, when would be times when these types of helmets and shields might be used?
I think the thing that would probably stick out in everyone's mind, it'd be easiest to explain it, is if you think of January 6th, what happened there? You would, if you go back and review those videos, that's a lot of the, the shields that we would be looking at. Essentially clear, thick plastic that you can see through but would stop you from getting jabbed with a pole or a post or somebody throwing something at you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion if I can find the thing. All right. I will move, thank you, resolution number 2025-02-015R, resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement, the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant for approval.
Your second?
Second.
Second.
I'm going to give that one to Sharice this time. That's okay. Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Further discussion? The clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Hersi?
Yes.
Councilmember Colasetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you.
While I'm here, any questions surrounding this past week? I know Councilwoman Wilkins, you, you had a question for me?
No, I think the point of order, we can't, it's not on our agenda for tonight.
Okay.
Thank you. We will move on to the last item, which is mayoral appointments to the Urbana Arts and Culture Commission. And I'm asking the council to approve the appointment of Robert White to the Urbana Arts and Culture Commission for a term ending June 30th, 2028. Mr. White has been a resident of Urbana for over four years, director, currently a director of group sales and partnerships with experience Champagne Urbana. He participated in the jury selection for Champagne County African-American Heritage Trail Murals and Trails. He was a United Way Emerging Community Leader in 2023 and was recognized by Central Illinois Business Magazine as one of the 40 under 40 in 2024. In his application, he wrote, "At my core, I'm a growth-oriented leader who understands the big picture, focused on community engagement while driving economic impact and strengthening cultural ties. My personality is collaborative and inspiring, empowering the community to think creatively and deliver results that matter." Is there a motion?
I move approval of Robert A. White appointment to Urbana Arts and Culture Commission with a term ending June 30th, 2028.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Chandra, seconded by Mary Alice. Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes. And with no further items before us, this meeting is adjourned.